Good evening. I'd like to call this city council meeting for January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Branco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Hardburns.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderman Lache.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Mayor Irvin is present.
On June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, the governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to a public health concern. As head of this body, I determine that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a court. Prior to commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified that they can see and hear one another. I further find that the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster. And more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an accessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussions and roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, and via Zoom teleconference. A notice of these arrangements has been given in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and as adapted by mayoral order. I, Mayor Richard Irvin, am physically present at our regular meeting location as identified by Resolution R twenty-one twenty-four. All votes shall be conducted by roll call and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Mr. Mohammed.
Yes, sir. Mayor, this evening, we have leading the Pledge of Allegiance, community health worker from V and A Healthcare, Karina Suarez-Darden. She's this week's recipients of the Healthcare Hero Award. Karina, if you could please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under that, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Karina. You're good. Hang right there. We'll get right back to you. Talk about some of the great work you're doing. Leading us in the invocation, as you know, we're so honored to have the senior pastor of New England Congregational Church, who is preparing to retire after thirty-five years of service at New England. Pastor Gary McCann, if you can please lead us in the invocation.
I invite you to prayer. God of hope, foundation of love, and source of all that exists. We pause today amid the dark shadows that cloud our world to give thanks for the many gifts that we enjoy each day. We are grateful for family and friends who support and encourage us, for this diverse community of Aurora in which we can rub shoulders with people of other faiths and other niceties of races and other lifestyles, for inner peace that transmits the violence of the world. And we thank you for a hope that conquers fear amid a deadly pandemic. We pray for all who are suffering from this virus that has taken its toll on our society, our nation, and our world. May those who have lost loved ones find solace, and may those who are in hospital as patients and those in medical personnel caring for them find strength for healing. Thank you for the city council members and for our mayor and for all city employees whose dedication to Aurora and its citizens deserves every accolade and every support. Give them wisdom to discern truth in the decisions they must make as they keep the welfare of the larger community their top priority. That end empower us all to be good citizens in Aurora and the world for the well-being of all.
So much, Pastor. If you can hang tight, we're going to be right back with you. I have a special presentation for you. And Mayor, going right into presentations this evening. We are honoring healthcare heroes. This year, each city council meeting, we've asked healthcare heroes from throughout the community, we will ask to lead us on the pledge as we shine a spotlight on these amazing individuals in our community. Last week, we honored, or two weeks ago, we honored Julio Flores from Rush Copley. And tonight's healthcare hero is Karina Suarez-Darden, a community health worker at V and A Healthcare. In her role, she's a constant figure in the community, working to make access to healthcare easier for our residents. Now, we partnered with her and the team at V and A last fall when we collaborated to host the Flu Shot Fridays at Phillips Park. She was right there with a smiling face welcoming the hundreds of visitors to the park. Karina is also the founder, the chair of the United Neighbors Neighborhood Group in War Three and the vice president of the District One Thirty-One Bilingual Parent Association and a member of our own Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board. Last year in September, she and her husband saw an extreme high and launched two new businesses here in Aurora, Presidential Cleaning Services and Presidential Roadside Services. A couple of months later, however, it was an extreme low for her family. And sadly, in December, as she worked to fight COVID in our community, COVID had a direct impact on her family. Our dear mother, Jenny Ferofino-Ardelain, lost her battle with the virus on December twelfth. Her mother also worked for V and A. And so tonight, Karina says this award is not just for her, it's for her beautiful mom, who's the real healthcare hero. So Karina Suarez-Darden, thank you for your work. Tonight, we honorably present you the Mayor's Healthcare Hero Award for your stalwart efforts to provide professional, quality, and compassionate care to your patients, their families, and our community. You are a hero in the truest sense because of your actions, reactions, and resilience. Thank you for your selfless service. Signed, the mayor, and today's date, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. City Council, we can please give a big round of applause to Karina Suarez-Darden. Doing some amazing work. Karina, do you have any comments?
I just want to say thank you, everyone. I wasn't expecting this. And this is this is amazing, this feeling. And I work very hard for my community. I just want to thank V and A for the opportunity that they're giving me to work really close with my community and thank you, thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Karina. We'll give the physical award to you. Alderman Masiacos, I know she's a proud member of your ward. Is there any comments you have for Karina?
Definitely a stalwart. It wouldn't be where it is today without her, that's for sure. And she comes from a good stock, a real solid family. Karina, sorry to hear about your your mother. I know how you're feeling. I lost my father as well in December. But nonetheless, congratulations on this well-deserved reward for you and your family and actually for the community group as well.
Thank you, Karina. Thank you for being our January twenty-sixth Healthcare Hero Honoree. Thanks for all that you do. We'll get the award to you. We appreciate you. Mayor, tonight, we also honor our invocation speaker. We call him a legend around these parts. The Reverend Gary McCann. Tonight, we issue a proclamation as he prepares to retire. In just a few days, a few weeks here, after thirty-five years of service, I read part of the proclamation. Reverend McCann, who was listening through speakerphone, so hopefully he can still hear all the comments.
I can hear you.
Perfect. And then we'll turn to you, Mayor, then open up the floor. Tonight's proclamation for Reverend Gary McCann. Whereas Reverend Gary McCann, Gary L. McCann, came to Aurora from Lake Geneva, Wisconsin in nineteen eighty to serve as the senior pastor of the First Baptist Church Aurora. And whereas Reverend Gary McCann in nineteen eighty-six became the Associate Minister of the New England Congregational Church, UCC, and was then called to serve as the Senior Minister of that congregation in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Reverend McCann was instrumental in the formation of Hesit House and has served on the Board of the Aurora Soup Kitchen, Suicide Prevention Services, and the Crisis Line of the Fox Valley. And he was past president of the Aurora Clergy Association and chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Aurora Wide WCA. And whereas Reverend McCann organized and conducted annual international travel tours to many foreign countries whereby participants were able to learn more of the culture of these countries and always return to Aurora with an even even greater respect and appreciation for our life in this community and country. And whereas Reverend McCann is a supporter of music and the arts and the church and the Aurora community, he served on the boards of the Fox Valley Symphony and the Fox Valley Orchestra and has performed as a pianist for choral groups, soloists, and musical theater productions. And whereas Reverend McCann is keenly interested in ecumenical dialogue between churches of the Christian faith and interfaith dialogue with those of Jewish and Muslim faiths and has developed a relationship with Aurora University's Whacklin Center for Faith and Action to promote education and understanding of world faith, making Aurora a better community in which to live. And whereas after thirty-five years of service, leadership and dedication to New England and the city of Aurora, Reverend Gary McCann has decided to retire, to enjoy more time, to travel, and spend time with his family.
Now, therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the city of Aurora, do hereby recognize and thank Reverend Gary L. McCann for his many contributions to our city and wish him a well-deserved retirement. Furthermore, it is my great honor and pleasure to proclaim January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, as Reverend Gary L. McCann Day in the city of Aurora. Thank you very much, Reverend McCann, for everything you've done.
I'm actually going to stop the sharing so that we can see Reverend McCann, a better pastor. Any remarks before we turn it over to Alderman?
Well, just to say thank you, I appreciate this honor very much, and I appreciate all the work that all of you do. We're grateful in Aurora for the leadership that you offer to you, the mayor, and the city council, and all of you. We're grateful, and I thank you for this award. I did things I didn't realize I did on there. Thanks for reminding me of those, Clayton. So anyway, thank you very much.
Very welcome, sir. Thank you for all you do. Any Alderman would like to show appreciation for Pastor McCann? Alderman Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Gary is my pastor, has been for a number of years. He's an amazing, amazing man. And we will miss him so much, but we have a new pastor at New England, which hopefully will will take us well into the future. But Gary wrote a book, a book of history of New England church. And I will tell you, a few pastors, I don't think of any, have have had the impact Gary had over the last thirty-five years. So Gary, thank you so much for all you've done for our community and for our church.
Thanks, Bill.
Additional Alderman?
Alderman Seville.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too want to say congratulations. I grew up in New England church. I have many fond memories worshiping there. I've known Gary for many years, and I appreciate your many years of service in our community. You wore many hats, that was mentioned this evening, and I think, and I know that the city is much better because of you. So I just want to extend my well wishes, my best well wishes to you and your family, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Hardburns.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, I have known Pastor McCann from when time he first got here. They was having classes over there, talking about parents, how to work those kids. And I was there laughing, having a ball. But we had the pleasure of working together to put together an obituary for our former mayor's son. We put it together in no time, and it was wonderful. He's an eloquent writer, but you know, they always say you speak better than you write, or write better than you speak. He does both. He has been phenomenal. We have been close down through the years. Whenever he see me, he smile a real bit, ready for my hug. So receive my hug now and enjoy your retirement because you deserve it. Now, we want another book. Now, Bill have already said that we need one more book. Two will be good, though. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm just going to say, we will we will miss the poems and limericks at the charity events and city meetings. Look, thank you.
Alderman O'Connor.
I wanted to indicate that the very first time I met Gary McCann, I was working on the United Way in Aurora, and I was assigned to the clergy section. And I had the honor of working with Gary McCann and Reverend McGinn from Holy Angels. And if you wanted to see a pair that got things done, I think the clergy contributions that year went up two hundred percent. So it just started to indicate to me that this is a very special person able to work in so many different areas. He's truly, truly a servant of the Lord, a servant of his community, servant of all the citizens. And we very much appreciate everything you've meant for Aurora, and you're going to continue working. I know that. Maybe detached a bit from the shirt, but just from your honors tonight, we can see all the associations and organizations you're going to continue to work with. So we very much appreciate it.
Thanks, Ben.
Absolutely. All right. Again, thank you very much for everything you've done for Aurora. Pastor McCann, and we look forward to seeing you around in your retirement, much more relaxed and calm. But I'm sure still we're still engaged in in the city of Aurora as you have been. Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Thanks for everything, Pastor, as he concludes. Thirty-five years of service at New England at the end of this month. Again, a big round of applause for January thirty-first as Reverend Gary McCann Day. Thank you, Pastor, for all that you do. Congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. As we continue with the presentations, pulling it back up, January is National Mentoring Month. And with things with COVID not being in schools and connected, we definitely still honor National Mentoring Month and all of the mentoring organizations in Aurora. Twenty-six plus for the work that they do, including our own initiatives out of the mayor's office, working with our millennial leaders at City Hall, making certain that our young men and women have those personal connections. Tonight, we also want to announce our Aurora Steam Academy. You know, November, the city council approved the budget to work with Tinker Works as we roll out to more than seven hundred youth in the city of Aurora. Steam-focused curriculum. We've branded it as the Aurora Steam Academy, a free cultural experience powered by creativity, critical thinking, and problem solving. Just to give you a highlight, as we begin these sessions, as we begin these sessions next month, the Aurora Steam Academy, seven hundred and fifty students. Just to give you a little background, last summer was the kickoff, the launch, the inaugural program with just fifty students. We saw the direct impact. As Jalen, the nine-year-old, said, "It was the best experience I ever had while learning." Fourth grade, it's the best thing you've ever experienced there. And we saw the impact. We know the impact of steam, know the impact of technology on our young people. And how do we blend this in with mentoring and education? This program certainly is going to lay that foundation as well. Seven hundred and fifty students, first through sixth grade. They're going to go over two steam courses. We'll talk about those in just a minute. Six community sites accessible throughout the community and four sessions between February and the end of the year. Again, shout out to all the young people who were doing the work last last summer. The students who are enrolled will go through two steam courses. Thank you to Mike Piggy and the entire team at IT, Simon Rodriguez and the youth department for the work that they've done, partnering with Tinker Works, the Art Alive Program for first to third graders. This interactive hands-on experience that teaches our students to code with their own electric art. If you listen to the MLK ceremony, we had one of the young leaders of coding, Ian Michael Brockett, his own nonprofit Dream Hustle Code, showing the importance of young people learning how to code. Well, our students right here in Aurora are doing it. Students will customize a wooden facade and attach electronics to make it light up, play different sounds, and move. Get it last summer. Looking forward to doing it all over again. The older students, fourth through sixth grade, elementary into the first years of middle school for our public school districts, will go through the Rover Robot course, an engaging critical thinking experience where students will learn about motors, sensors, LEDs, and Adren Truenino microcomputers by developing a fully functional customized robot. And you were there last summer, as many of our Aldermen were. You saw these robots come to life, and you saw the students come to life as well when they watched their their projects come into play. Six community sites at the APS Institute in downtown Aurora, the Eastwood Community Center, Main Baptist Church, Randall West Community Center, Sacred Heart Church, and the At-Risk Mentoring Mobile Tech Center. What we didn't have last summer, we have now, a tech center that can now literally go neighborhood to neighborhood. So it removes some of those those physical infrastructure barriers to keep them connected, puts it running a bus and taking the services out into the neighborhoods, able to serve more geographic areas. So six community sites, but that are mobile tech center, it really becomes almost infinite when you get out to the neighborhoods. What does it look like? Well, it's between now and December. We're breaking it down into four different sessions, like any true academy. The winter session is February and March. It's eighteen courses in total. Remember, those two courses, eighteen courses, a hundred and sixty-eight students can fill in those eighteen courses. Then we'll move to the spring session, April and May. There's nineteen courses in those weeks. A hundred and seventy-six students can participate. Our summer session carries us through July, June, July, and August. Actually, June is in there as well. Twenty-four courses, two hundred and twenty students. And our fall session, September two through December. We may move that December to the winter as we get closer, but that's twenty-three courses, two hundred and twelve students. What does that look like? Every course is one to two weeks. You know, some are two weeks and others are just one-week courses, depending on the timing. There's no more than ten students per course. Extremely important to have that that ratio of instructors to students so we can really be hands-on, working with them and learning. This time, each session will begin with an open house. We start with a virtual open house for winter and spring, where all of the registrants will come on Zoom, get to meet the instructors, get to say hi to the mayor, say hi to the Alderman, a nice family night before we kick off the sessions. And each session will conclude, and there's going to be in-person in summer and fall, hopefully, as we move through the tiers. Congratulations on making it to tier one, too, by the way. But as we move through the tiers, in-person open houses later on in the year. Each session will conclude with a recognition ceremony, a graduation, a promotion, if you will. Again, these will be virtual from winter and spring. And then hopefully, as we move into the throughout the year and through mitigations, it can be an in-person summer and fall. Where the students in those individual sessions will receive certificates, will get show off their their artwork and their their coding and all the projects that they they put together. Applications for each session will open two weeks prior to the start of the session. So if our first session begins February fifteenth, applications will open February first. Those applications will go through our youth department and through our IT. We'll make certain that when we look to fill those, they're filled with students equitably throughout our districts. We'll then look at wards and we'll look at making certain that our underserved populations are served equitably. So applications open for winter session on Monday, February first, next Monday. And classes then will begin two weeks after that, February fifteenth. And in that two-week window, after all, you know, registrants are notified that they're in the class, we'll have an open house to do a kickoff for everyone. So city council, to the city of Aurora, please stay tuned to the Aurora, for the Aurora Steam Academy announcement. As we go out, we know those first hundred and sixty-eight seats will fill in quickly. But as we celebrate now our National Mentoring Month, our education community getting back in the in-person learning and learning, this will be an amazing compliment, as one of the superintendents said, to the the school year, particularly in this COVID time, during these COVID times where the the face-to-face connections aren't as plentiful. So that's the Aurora Steam Academy. Mayors, we also honor National Mentoring Month. We want to look back. You know, last year during National Mentoring Month, we kicked off the the mayor's mentoring initiative. And we looked at mentoring and leadership development programs for youth in Aurora under the Aurora Mentoring Alliance. Of course, COVID hit early March, and schools went out of session. Things were were halted. But we picked right back up where we left off, looking at now, then twenty-six programs. I can at least count three or four more that have been developed since last year. But a lot of school-based mentoring programs, community-based mentoring and leadership development programs that really will impact the lives of our young people. Looking forward to re-engaging the Aurora Mentoring Alliance, working with our Aurora Education Commission to make certain that our programs have what they need from a city perspective to keep an impact on the lives of our young people, not just in National Mentoring Month, but throughout the balance of the year. This direct impact, we know, will impact our city exponentially in multiple ways. Mayor, that concludes my report. I'll turn it to you.
You know, I, the programs that that we just outlined are amazing for for our young people. And I see Mr. Piggy is here, has his young people on the screen with him today who also participated in in Tinker Works. How you guys doing? Good to see. You know, it's important for us to have these type of programs to ensure the success of our kids. I see Simon Rodriguez also on, the director of our youth services. It's important for us to, you know, to to highlight and to make sure that we provide opportunities for our young kids from grade school to high school, from from really the cradle to college, to ensure their success. And whenever we highlight these, it makes me feel good and it makes my, you know, makes my heart smile. But truthfully, I'd be it'd be irresponsible of me not to only recognize the good that our kids are doing in the in the services that we're providing, so our kids can have an opportunity for the future. I think we have to talk about also unfortunate those kids that fall through the cracks. Now, as all of you, and many of you are aware, over the last couple of months, we've had a major uptick in violent crime here in the city of Aurora. For many of our black and brown kids are committing gun violence to the point where they're killing each other. Our black and our brown boys are killing each other. There's no coming back from that, as we all know. And the reality is that crime has increased around the country for a number of reasons. Because of COVID, folks not working, cooped in the house, the anxiety of of what we're going through in this pandemic in our country. And because of it, we're seeing so much more violence than we've seen in this city in over a decade. Now, it's easy for us to just say, you know, this is what's happening throughout the country. All large cities our size and larger are experiencing this uptick in crime. We can just say that and blame it on COVID, blame it on, you know, society and what we see, you know, throughout the country. But we can't do that here in Aurora. We can't just simply say it is what it is. We've got to do something more. And I'm not going to lie to you, I've, over the last number of weeks, as I get texts from the police chief and the folks that work with, are telling me yet another young boy has, life has been violently and senselessly taken. I feel helpless. And I wonder what we should do, what we can do. But we can't simply have a hopeless feeling and leave it at that. We've got to do something more. Therefore, next, I've been talking with the police department and our community services department. And next week, we're going to have a press conference on Wednesday at eleven o'clock and talk about some new initiatives that we're going to be implementing here in Aurora. More initiatives, as Clayton just pointed out, that, you know, support our kids that that are that are willing to learn. But initiatives from the police department for those kids that that fall through the cracks, as well as more initiatives from our community outreach. Now, we know we've all, you know, taken steps back during this during this COVID crisis. But now it's time for all of us to take steps forward and make sure we protect our community, protect our families, our neighborhoods, protect our young children, sometimes from each other and themselves. So I hope all the Aldermen, as many of that as I can, can join me. We're going to have an in-person press conference in City Hall on the second floor. I know all of us haven't been in there together in a long time. As we've been having our meetings on Zoom, but we're going to have a press conference and talk about what we can do to stave off this violence, so we can focus on beautiful programs like Simon Rodriguez are introducing to the city, like Mr. Piggy is introducing to the city, like Alderman Hardburns are introducing to the city, like Mr. Mahajana is introducing to the city. But until we address those kids that fall to the cracks, we're not complete. And I want us to be a complete community. And I think all of us working together will make that happen. So I look forward to an announcement for next Wednesday, eleven AM, and talking about what we can do to save all the lives of our young people here in the city of Aurora. Before we leave public comment and go on to, I'm sorry, before we leave presentation, go on to public comment. I do see we have Mr. Rodriguez on. Would you like to add anything as far as to what Mr. Mohammed stated and all the programs that we're doing through the city?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo your sentiment is it hurts all of us in the community when when we know that there are young people taken way too soon from us, where we reflect on what we, as as providers or advocates for our community, what we could do better. And as as Mr. Mohammed mentioned, we definitely have some great initiatives. Mr. Piggy could definitely talk a little bit more in-depth on on the Tinker Works project that we have coming up, the Steam Academy. And and one other thing is, is we're working on on getting our stakeholders, but more, but also our community organizations that serve our youth together. We're we're in the process of establishing a quarterly meetup with these organizations. So if there are others that are listening in today, I invite you to please personally reach out to myself. um, uh, srodriguez@aurora-il.org. Um, we wanna bring as many to the table, um, and because when we come together under these unfortunate circumstances, we start to see these seeds planted and, you know, and, and, and new initiatives and new growth. And ultimately, it's to serve our kids and to better this community. So, uh, we are always open to continuing these, these relationships and building on them. Uh, in the meantime, though, uh, I, I just echo what Mayor Irwin said about it, it hurts us, but we wanna move forward and, and do as much as we can together with our vast resources and with, with, uh, just community, uh, uh, buy-in. So, uh, again, we are here, and if any aldermen ever have any questions or wanna discuss any programs, any ideas, we are always open to do so.
Mr. Mahajan, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alderman Loft, you got a question?
Yeah, it's a question, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate what you're, uh, you and the police working together to do some initiatives because of the crime. But I'm asking if you could share your initiatives before next Wednesday, a press conference with us, so we could all have, we all have constituents we represent. It'd be nice if we could know what's going on before the press conference and maybe give some input.
Mr. Mahajan? Did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Mahajan?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Irwin, and, uh, good evening all, uh, the city council. I just wanna say that I'm deeply touched, Mayor, by, uh, what you said, uh, Mr. Mohammed, you as well. Uh, from my side, I'll just say, uh, something I've said before, and that I truly consider it a privilege to be partnering with the city of Aurora and serving the youth of the city of Aurora. Um, we certainly hope that, uh, we age you in terms of your objectives of, um, you know, helping these children. And I'll just make a commitment from my side, saying that we will be there with those children, uh, to ensure, you know, they're able to get the maximum potential they can from the course. I also wanna take a moment to thank very much, um, uh, certainly David Smith. I'm very excited, David, about the mobile tech collaboration that we have going. And of course, Harish, and Harish, my apologies, I still can't pronounce your last name. Uh, definitely look forward to partnering with you in terms of the delivery of, uh, Tinker Work to the community. And then, uh, both Simon Rodriguez, I, you know, I've, I've had the opportunity to meet you, and I look forward to continuing the relationship, to build that with you. And then, of course, my, uh, my friend, uh, Michael Peggies. I, uh, really appreciate, Michael, everything you do, and, uh, Mayor Irwin, the aldermen, alderwomen in the city council. Um, from my side, I look forward to just a wonderful relationship, uh, with you as we move forward. So, so thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And Mr. Piggies, I see we have Nina, Noel, and Noah, uh, that all, that participated in, uh, Tinker Works. Can you have them say, did, what'd you guys think about that? Did you have a good time?
Yeah, I liked it.
Did you like it? Yeah, you wanna do it again? What about you, Nina?
Yeah, I wanna do it.
Yeah. All right, nice to see, oh, back there covering his face, yeah. All right. Well, well, thank you guys for coming on with your dad today and, and letting us know how everything is going, and I'm glad to see you guys enjoyed, um, working with Tinker Works and look forward to participating again. And I think that's gonna be the sentiment of all the young people that participate in the program. And let me just say this before we go on to the Change Reform Initiative, is we talk about change. Just recognize those young people that we talked about that fall through the cracks, that are taking each other's lives, kids taking kids. If we had gotten to them five years before, when they were Nina's age, or Noel's age, Noah's age, then maybe, maybe they'd be on the screen in the future with us today. You know, uh, as, as aldermen, as, as, as folks that are running these programs, as, as just successful kids that just wanna have an opportunity and wanna live, you know, uh, and, and be productive in our society. So it's our responsibility to, to look at both extremes, to both, both ends of the spectrum, to make sure we save as many lives as possible. So when we talk about change, we wanna change the whole city for everybody. Thank you guys for coming on with us, uh, the Piggies, uh, and, um, uh, Clayton, I'll let you go into the Change Reform Initiative.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Alderman Hardburn.
We have on Mike and do the introduction, Mike.
You, I'm sorry.
Mike?
Mr. Piggies?
Yes, sir. Was a question?
Speaking in terms of who we have on the line.
Uh, we have a number of people on the line.
Mr. Mayor, we had a meeting in reference to the Steam Academy, uh, at the main Baptist church. And Dr. Julian Spencer, the pastor, indicated that he's more than happy to get involved more with the Steam Academy. Uh, him and, uh, Siddiq, all of them and their children, they're really ready to roll. We have young people that is ready to hit the ground rolling right now, today, to make things work and to be a great example for the youth in Aurora. Truly, if we, if each one of us can reach one, we can reach one. But if the kids haven't been reached, this program is gonna do that to get their mind together, and coding is very important. The young people know more about computers than all of us that are older, because this is their time. But I do think with the digital vibe, we must use what we have. Pastor Spencer has a word that he wanna bring to us in reference to the program we're gonna do at main Baptist, Pastor Spencer.
Dr. Spencer?
Uh, good evening. Uh, you can't see my video, but I, I'm, I'm so excited to be a part of this, uh, this Steam Academy. Um, it's not only going to be a blessing to my immediate church community, but the larger community. What is so important about, um, uh, delivering this kind of training and doing it over the course of years is what we are doing as a city, um, is answering the question, and that is, what are we going to, uh, provide, uh, our, our under-resourced community? What are we gonna provide, uh, these boys? What are we gonna provide these young men, uh, as an alternative, uh, to them, uh, taking themselves out into the streets and, and doing violence and things of that nature? We can do a whole bunch of programs, uh, to, to, to take them out of or, or to punish them for what they've done. Uh, but programs like this, uh, that give them another avenue of not just, um, uh, daycare or not just something to keep their minds active, uh, but something that they can turn into an actual career, um, is, is an amazing thing. I'm excited about it. I'm thankful to, uh, our mayor and aldermen and, and, and all those that are, are doing this together. But I want you guys to hear from me, right, a community stakeholder and someone that works with our community, that programs like this, that actually are productive and they happen over the course of many, many years, really start and, and promote a culture, uh, of helping, uh, of our young people, helping themselves, um, and actually, um, doing something that I think will help, uh, our city become a better place. We, we are trying to become a smarter city, and, and in order to become a smarter city in terms of I T, to have our young people actually to, to learn more and to become smarter with it, um, I think only promotes, uh, the very thing that we're trying to do. I, my heart breaks when a young person takes their lives, or my heart breaks when a young person takes another person's lives. But we always, uh, ask ourselves a question, what can we do, right, to get these young, young people engaged in something positive? And I wanna say to our mayor and to all of those that are working really hard, programs like this do it. My hats are off to you. You guys even have my, my son excited about being a part of, being a trainer, and I, I don't know what gets him excited on, on, on any other day, day of the week, but my son is excited. He's here. Say, come on, I can't see. Okay, but he's excited, so I just wanted you guys to know. That we are ready to roll. Thank you so, so very, very much.
Thank you, Pastor, uh, Spencer. Uh, we also have, uh, and I'll just introduce some folks, because I think we have to move on. Uh, Gatom Batia on, Siddiq Reseed, David Smith, let me, uh, Anu Mahajan, who, who spoke, Harish, uh, Ananta Pamanaban, that's how you pronounce that, brother? He's breaking up, Ananta Pamanaban. And a couple of other folks that are on, um, that, you know, are gonna support this program, support our youth, support, you know, our kids and, and, and give Aurora a fighting chance to, uh, come out of this, uh, pandemic on top of, on top of things. Give our, give our kids a shot, all right? Thank you, guys, for all participating, being part of the, being part of the team. David Smith, I see you down there, brother. Um, we really appreciate it. Thank you. Um, go ahead, Clayton, you can go on to the Change Initiative.
Definitely, it was really briefly, as we said from the beginning, change phase one, really looking at police reform, it would extend throughout the community. We watched that extension, there's diversity, equity, and inclusion focus. While the president today signed, uh, you know, executive orders on, on equity and inclusion, you know, across the board. So we watch us now in Aurora go into the educational world, uh, for, for change. You'll see more of that come out. Just really briefly, C R B finalist, we announced the top twenty. The, the, the interviews conclude, uh, next week, midweek, February third. And so after that, you know, we'll then have additional information on, on, on the mayor's final nine recommendations. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wish now for public comment?
Not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, mayoral appointments. And Clerk, can you read the first item under mayoral appointments?
Twenty dash zero eight eight five, a resolution appointing Gautam Batia to the Aurora Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll move.
There's been Alderman Hardburn, second by Alderman Messiakos. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Loveys.
Motion carries, resolutions approved. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Batia, you, uh, you are now part of the Aurora Planning and Zoning Commission team. Thank you for your service. Would you like to say anything?
Sure, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you to the city council. Uh, you know, I've been, uh, a resident of Aurora. It's been my home for twelve years now. And, um, I, you know, my involvement has increased and, you know, my effort and my desire and my passion to give back to the community just increases every day. It is one Aurora, and I am honored to serve on this, uh, committee. Thank you very much, and a special thank you to Alderman Patty Smith for recommending me, uh, to this committee. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, brother. Thank you.
Mayor?
Uh, Patty, Alderman Smith.
So, J B, I just wanted to, or G B, um, thank you for, uh, being flexible here, because we had you all set and ready to go on a different commission, and when, uh, we had the need on this, uh, particular slot, you know, we realized that there was a much better spot for you, a place where you could really excel for our city. So thank you for being open and pliable and working with us and, and making what you're gonna be very successful in that position. I look forward to, uh, to keeping in touch with you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, can you call, uh, read the next item under mayoral appointments?
Twenty dash zero eight eight nine, a resolution reappointing Shanita Anderson to the Aurora Planning and Zoning.
I'll move. Second?
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburn, second by Alderman Garza. Any questions, discussions on this item? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Loveys.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. I see we have Ms. Anderson on, on screen with us, hello? And thank you very much for your continued service uh, on the Aurora Planning and Zoning Commission. We look forward to, uh, your, your continued hard work, uh, into the future. We know you'll do well. Would you like to say anything, then?
Well, thank you for, uh, giving me opportunity to continue serving and to serve our committee, and I love the board. I've done great work, people on the board are great, so I appreciate the opportunity to be able to continue to, to support committee and, uh, the city as well. So thank you.
You're very, you're very, very welcome. Good to see.
You, too.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can you read the next item under mayoral appointments?
Twenty dash zero eight nine zero, resolution appointing Angela Thomas to the Aurora Civil Service.
Second?
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburn, second by Alderman Jenkins. Any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Loveys.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Congratulations, Ms. Thomas. And, uh, welcome to the, uh, Aurora Civil Service Commission family. We appreciate, uh, we appreciate you, your willingness to, to volunteer and be a part of, uh, be a part of Aurora. Um, would you like, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the city in a new capacity, um, being part of a process that, um, seeks to engage, um, the best, uh, the most qualified um, to, um, help do the work of our city. Um, and so I'm excited about, um, joining the commission and, uh, focusing on that work, so I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
And we're excited to have you.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Alderman Hardburns.
Mr. Mayor, Angie gonna hit the ground running. She's never started anything that she didn't run into, and she make it happen, she make it work. You all may remember her with our twenty-twenty census, she is a go-getter, so, uh-oh, whoever coming in, she's a go-getter. She's ready to work right now. Angie, congratulations. Thank you for your service to all the things you've done in the past, but we can't wait to see your bright future with this committing commission.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Thank you very much, Angie Thomas. All right, that concludes our, uh, mayoral appointments. Let's go on to our, um, consent agenda. Next, we'll hear both the consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda together in full. The clerk, now please read both agendas in full.
Twenty dash zero eight two seven, a resolution to accept the quote from Collison and Crime Forensics LLC, three hundred South Fillmore Street, Pepalon, Nebraska, six eight zero four six, to purchase Leica RTC three six zero three D laser scanner kit with accessories and certified onsite training at the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-one cents for the Aurora Police Department. Twenty dash zero three, zero eight three four, an ordinance deferring the implementation of the annual water sewer rate increase as provided in Article Two of Chapter forty-eight of the Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled Municipal Utility Services until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Twenty dash zero eight six four, a resolution requesting ratification approval to renew a subscription for clarity of strategic enterprise project and portfolio management software with CDWG Corporation, two hundred North Milwaukee Avenue, Vernon Hills, Illinois, six zero zero six one, under the National IPA Purchasing Agreement, two zero one eight zero one one dash zero one for a three-year contract not to exceed eighty-one thousand fifteen dollars. Twenty dash zero eight seven zero, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one twenty-twenty-one wheeled coach Ford F-five fifty-four-by-four gas type one ambulance from Fire Service Incorporated, St. John, Indiana, in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars for the Aurora Fire Department. Twenty dash zero eight eight seven, a resolution request approval to pay one-year renewal of Excela Incorporated, two six three three, Camino Ramon, Suite five hundred, San Ramon, California, nine four five eight three four, customer relationship management hosted solution in the amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Twenty one dash zero zero two seven, a resolution authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the Yall LLC, formerly known as Windy City Distribution Incorporated redevelopment agreement.
I'll move.
Twenty one dash zero zero one one, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting. Twenty one dash zero zero one three, a resolution accepting the improvements and maintenance security for Water Leaf Women's Center, three five nine eight, East New York Street.
So move.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburn,
Second?
Second by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? And the direct to consent agenda, there being none. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Loveys.
Motion carries, the consent agenda and the direct-to-concent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to unfinished business. Um, Madam Clerk, can you read the first item under unfinished business? Recognize that Alderman Messiakos has recused himself from both, both items under unfinished business. So at this time, Alderman Messiakos will, uh, turn off his microphone and his camera. Madam Clerk, we read the first item.
Twenty one dash zero zero one five, a resolution expressing official intent for certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from the proceeds of an obligation.
So move.
There's been a motion by Alderman O'Connor, second by Alderman Hardburns. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no questions or discussions. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Love and Aces.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Can you read the next item under unfinished business?
Twenty one dash zero zero one six, an ordinance of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Kendall and Will Counties, Illinois, providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds, series 2021, in an aggregate principal amount of $8 million and related matters. Finance Committee Agenda Item, January 14, 2021 meeting.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, I believe, second by Alderman O'Connor.
Question.
Hold on one second. Are there any questions or discussion on this particular item? Alderman Lachey.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I mentioned this to Marty, that before we issue bonds, we know that the developers have their, their money in escrow at Chicago Title.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Lachey, thank you for the question. Mr. Debo and I have been working on this today. I'm very happy to report that I've been in touch with Chicago Title. I received waivers of lien documentation regarding direct payments to vendors. And I also received today documentation for what is called the master closing agreement that outlines all of the dollars that are being placed in escrow. So as we noted to the council when this came forward back in December, that some of the expenses would also be reserves. What we have seen in the statements is exactly what was represented that would happen. One of the things that I asked for today was, we had received one statement that wasn't signed. And Chicago Title turned that around within one hour and said, here is the statement that shows all of the items set aside in reserve per original discussion. And I already had just $2 million of expenses. But remember that per the previous agreement, Fox Valley Developers wasn't supposed to be spending money on the large building. So they have kicked it in gear. We have expenses from November. We will also have expenses listed from December and January that are coming forward. That will be presented to Chicago Title for raw requests. In short, it is working as was represented in the Second Amendment. And I'm very happy with what we've learned out of this process for some of these major agreements to make Chicago Title or other third parties an integral part of our system so that we aren't the ones always on the hook for tracking every little expense. It's a, it's a great second and third, I would say safeguard. So short answer is Alderman Lachey, yes.
Thank you.
And, and actually, there's more. Mr. Alexandra, you want to talk a little bit about the progress? Alexandra?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, my understanding also is that one of the major tenants that's going to run the senior portion of the old Copley facility is actually going to be opening a leasing office in downtown Aurora. So very good news on that front that they are up and running and not only complying per Mr. Lyons comments, but also rolling forward on the development. So it's all very, very good news. Very encouraging.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Any more questions, comments from the Alderman, Alderman Bog? You're on mute, Alderman Bog?
Mr. Lyons, thank you for the information. Are we going to have those documents forwarded to us for our review?
That is not a normal process. If that's something you would like, that's not something that has been provided in previous RDAs or as a part of a, a bond issue. If that is the will of the, if that's something you'd like, we can certainly forward it. It is, any of the information I have is not confidential information. So we can forward that along. But again, it would, so I would send it to the entire council then at that point.
Yeah, of course. As long as it's not confidential, Mr. Lyons. All right. So no further questions. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Love and Aces.
Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. There are no items under new business. It's going to treasure report. I acknowledge receipt of the December 2020 treasures report. Are there any questions or discussion on the treasures report? From anybody on the council? No? Well, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Is there a motion to prove and pay the bills?
So moved.
Has been a motion made by Alderman Hartburn, second by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussion on the bills? There being none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Mayor, mayor, there's a question from staff.
There was.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but Marty does have his regular financial update as well as part of his treasurer's report.
Hold on, let me finish, let me finish the bills and we'll go back to treasure report. Are there any, were there any questions on the bills? No questions on the bills. Clerk, will you call the roll?
And we had a yes from Alderman Yamas.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Love is.
Motion carries, the bills are approved. Before we close out, Mr. Lyons, do you have presentation for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And if it, if it wasn't good news, I might have let you slide. But since it's good news, you know, usually I'm the one that has to, you know, also give bad news. But since we have good news, we would like to present it. And I'm sorry, I'm not on the right page. So I'll get to the top. Is everyone looking at the, the normal COVID-19 contingency planning update?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So the, as noted before, we have spent all of the $1 million. We've confirmed that. So since our December meeting, HESIT has provided all of the invoices, et cetera, associated with the DuPage County grant of $1 million. So that's a great thing. We are still going to approach the counties if there are any other relief. And of course, the headlines today are very much looking at about a much larger stimulus package. If that goes through, we will certainly keep the council informed about any of the processes associated with that stimulus package because local government was listed in that next round of stimulus. So we will keep that in mind. The, we are working on additional City of Aurora financial relief programs that will be coming to the finance committee on Thursday involving restaurants, small business and residential relief programs that are all timed for what could be the end of some federal programs. One of them would be the eviction and foreclosure moratorium could end at some point. And we're looking to try and have a program in place that might help folks when that eventuality occurs. So more to come after we go to finance on Thursday. Sales taxes did decrease. Remember last month, they increased over the prior year. And 2019 was a great year for sales tax, but very stable at only a 5% decrease. Income tax and property taxes are still very stable. We are looking forward to what the IML and the state of Illinois might project on income tax for 2021. That'll be the big issue that we face. And we did cut that quite a bit in the city's budget. Our operating fund reserve compares favorably to last year. Our cash balance is $14 million above last year's amount for the same year. And we ended with a surplus in the general fund revenues compared to expenses at $5 million. So that is due in large part to an $11 million CARES Act contribution. But our departments would have managed all the way down to just a $6 million deficit without that CARES Act infusion. And we'd have still been in a stable position. So I think that says a lot about how the city managed revenues and expenses for the 2020 year. So, you know, that's, this is shown graphically. And in years past, we've had some down, you know, downward trends towards the end of the year and we held on. I would call your attention to the far left side of this slide. What is our usual situation? We don't get any property taxes in until June. But we're in a very good position right now that we could, if we just take a look at this slide, you go from here down to here, it's a 10 to $15 million decrease in fund balance or cash. And when you start off at this high level of 44 or 36.8 million for fund, when you start off in a better position, we will be in a great spot by May compared to, just take a look at this one. We were at in 19, a negative fund balance in May. Now, other funds have available resources to prop up the general fund. But we are hopefully going to be in a better position. If we have issues with COVID, we certainly could also have issues with the stimulus. That's what's being planned right now. We can only do what we, we can only control what we have in front of us. And I think we've done that so far. So I've already hit on, on these things. Reasons to proceed with caution, vaccinations, we just want to see that come through because that's really going to determine a lot about how open we'll be. I've already referenced the overdue rent mortgage issues. The one thing, revenues, we know that we already put the income tax loss of $3 million in our budget. Could be more, but we've already taken a step to reduce our income tax projection by 15% based on the unemployment that we experienced in 2020 that will show up in income tax payments in 2021. So lastly, continue to go after our grants. We have no plans for any debt issuance for operating purposes. Continue to authorize public safety and essential staff replacements. Look at other staff replacements for operational needs on a case by case basis. You will see a lot of capital projects coming forward. You've already seen some of them from Public Works on Engineering. So we are moving forward and getting our capital program back into gear that assuming we are going to come out of this, this summer and business back to normal. So that means we're doing all of our engineering and bringing a lot of those approvals to you right now. So, and as noted, we will continue an analysis of remediation and business support activities. And there'll be more to talk about that after we go to finance and in the month of February. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. And thank you, sir.
Thank you. You want to close out of that so I can see who might have questions? Any questions from the Alderman, Alderman Franco?
Yeah, I just want to say, looking at those numbers, kudos to Marty and his team. Based on what we've been through in the last year, to be in the position we're in, while it's not perfect, it's so much better than I thought. So much better. I think a lot of other municipalities are going through right now. So thank you, because you guys have done a wonderful job and the staff that made this happen, the various departments. This is, this is pretty remarkable where we are considering what we face. So I take my hat off to you guys. Thanks.
Alderman O'Connor?
Well, I'll second Alderman Franco. And I've made these comments before that I think we are truly appreciative of, of the work done by Marty and the finance department in regard to obviously working hard and on the real hard issue or the tough issues. And then also very comprehensive reporting. I think it makes it so much easier to understand where we're at, what's happening. I will say on behalf of the finance committee, we've been working with Mr. Lyons for quite a while. I think we've gotten to the point where we'll ask him a question and we'll ask him to say yes or no first. Then if we want explanation, then we'll go on from there. So Mr. Lyons, as you've understood, very, very comprehensive in regard to his, his explanation of things. But, and, and it really is well received and appreciated by the finance committee. So.
Don't forget Mr. Alexandra. Oh, my gosh, we always, he's been integral in this process as far as helping finance manage the biweekly expenses. Look, he turned his, he turned his screen off. But, and again, if you look at that treasures report, you'll see the departments that had to keep working and then the ones who pulled back as much as they could for the benefit of the whole city. So on one page on that variance report, numbers tell a story for me. So thank you, Alderman O'Connor.
All right. Thank you, the Aurora team for making it happen. Finance, mayor's office, everybody for making sure we stayed afloat. We still got, we still got a ways to go. But we're, we're, we're right there on top, ready to kick doors open when we're able to get back out. Alderman O'Connor?
Yeah, I wanted to make one other comment before we adjourned. I very much appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your comments in regard to meeting the challenges of what we see in our community in regard to increasing crime and difficulties in the community. I think we look forward to hearing the information, look forward to working with everybody and appreciate certainly everybody else that came in this evening and talking about what could be done. Lots of challenges. It, it did strike me in seeing the one photo of Mr. Mayor showing, or looking at the young men tying their tie, that in the long run, as far as I'm concerned, it is easier to build a robot than to be able to tell somebody how to tie a tie. It just does not work easily. So, but, and if you can accomplish that on top of everything else that we're working with, kudos to you. So, but.
Absolutely. Well, over, over, under, brother. Over. I practiced with two strings when I was a kid. All right. Well, if there is no other business before the council, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
This is an Alderman Hartburn, second by Alderman Franco. Alden, Madam Clerk, you want to call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lachey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Love is.
Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. I'll see you all next week for COW.
Yes.